All right. Josh, are we rolling?
Yes, sir. We are ready to go.
All right.
You can start in three, two, one.
All right. We'll call the City Council Special Meeting CIP Update Series Agenda for June twenty-six, twenty-three at four oh five to order. Madam Secretary, I will certify we have a role, a quorum present as myself, Mayor Protim, Coza, members Carbone, Cade, and Patel are present in the chamber. I do know Mr. Barry is here, should be in the room shortly. Mr. Hernandez has let me know he is out of town tonight, so will not be here during this meeting or the next. So with that, any citizens' comments? Did they come in? All right. Moving forward in our agenda to new business, capital improvement program, CIP update series, drainage and transportation. With that, I'll turn it over to Stan.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. As we do three times a year, we go through the different portions of our capital improvement program to give an update, full update on not only the CIP itself and all the the major projects that we're working on, but we also want to look at it holistically and look at the the maintenance of all that infrastructure as well. So tonight we'll be covering drainage and transportation. So we'll hear from Jamison and his team on the on the big projects we're doing. And then we've got several folks that'll be updating us on on the maintenance and and the work we're doing in those areas with a little bit of a new area we haven't seen before tonight, talking about our traffic and our traffic division, our traffic signal system and the work that the good work those folks do. So with that, I'll hand it over to Jamison.
Okay, like Trent said, I'm Jameson Appel. I'm the Assistant Director of Capital Projects. So for this project, I mean, for this presentation, we're going to go over some of the the future with the purpose. We're going to talk about our drainage, our drainage infrastructure, our projects and the O and M part of that. The same with transportation, specifically our traffic group. We're also going to talk about some near torn priorities and upcoming project milestones. And at the end, we can do a short update on the the surface water. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Raj, our city engineer, to start the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I would like to start from the first slide because that's how I prepared. I hope you don't mind that. First, I would like to welcome you to Capital Improvement Program Update Series, and thank you for providing the opportunity to be a part of it. Our team members from EPW will be presenting various aspects of drainage and transportation system in their respective areas of expertise. Assistant Director of Project James will be presenting the CIP update. Traffic Engineer, he also will be updating the Traffic Division Task, and Assistant Director of EPW, Eric Hammond, will be talking about maintenance aspect of street and drainage system. These slides shows general overview of the presentation. We will be spending most of the time on drainage and transportation projects. We will have a question and answer session after the completion of drainage presentation and then after transportation. I have used this slide. It is the same slide that we presented last year, and our primary objective is same, so it's still serves the same purpose. The future with purpose help us to focus on strategic priorities and answer why, how, and what. The city utilizes strategic planning tools such as water master plan, wastewater master plan, drainage master plan, welfare plan, etc., to lay out future plans, identify needs and develop capital projects, which are land use plans and staffing plans. As our manager, city manager mentioned, we presented, we come to present you at several times in the year, and this is the street and drainage presentation. The next will be parks and facilities in October and water and wastewater in December twenty-two thirty-three. This is the drainage part. I'll start the drainage and we go sequentially. So here, I, Jameson, and Eric will be covering various aspects of drainage. First part, I'll present. The second one will be by Jameson, and then it we will turn it over to Eric for the presentation. So I thought it would be meaningful to go back and understand how we evolved since we realized the importance of flood plain management. The city adopted its first ordinance on July eleven nineteen eighty-three and provided guideline for design of storm sewer and drainage system. We did not have the concept of detention requirement at that time. On February second nineteen eighty-seven, flood damage prevention ordinance was adopted, which established permitting procedure and define role of flood flood plain administrator and adopted flood insurance rate map. Only on September twenty twenty, the city adopted storm drainage design criteria and required the provision of detention and no downstream impact analysis. We need to understand that drainage engineering is not an absolute science, and the design engineer can make a lot of assumptions that can change the design. It can involve the size, storm sewer size, conveyance size, as well as detention volume significantly. So it was important to set a minimum detention rate requirement, which was done in two thousand seven EDCM. The rate has remained the same since two thousand seven. In two thousand twenty-two, the city adopted Atlas fourteen and five hundred year flood plain field mitigation requirement. This is also part of evolution process. On the right side, you will see an image that shows area which has history of repetitive flooding. The data received from FEMA on flood insurance claim was used to create a map of repetitive loss area analysis. Engineering will be presenting the RLAA report to the city council in July and adopt it through resolution. It will help the city to gain additional credit points on the city's CRS score. We began this process last year and went through several steps, which included mailing out letters to residents and business owners residing in repetitive flood loss areas and collecting additional data related to the source of flood and expected mitigation measures. This slide shows what we have done in terms of drainage infrastructure. So it shows the major regional drainage benefits and major regional detention ponds. It makes me happy to give a lot of credit to our previous staff, as well as to the council, who came up with brilliant ideas and installed several regional detention ponds when we had plenty of available land. We can see that drainage bond in two thousand one and two thousand seven primarily focused on regional detention, whereas two thousand nineteen drainage bond projects and two thousand twenty-three drainage bond projects will be addressing local drainage areas. That the city has constructed approximately approximately four thousand one hundred fifty-one acre feet of regional detention since two thousand. This slide shows CIP drainage achievement between two thousand seven and two thousand twenty-three. As seen in the slide, the city's drainage improvement projects are targeted to improve aged infrastructures, specifically in repetitive flood loss areas. Approximately fifty million has been spent on drainage structure, infrastructure in the last six years. Now, let's talk about master drainage plan update. Like water, wastewater and thoroughfare master plan, it is important to update master drainage plan every five years. The city's last master plan is dated two thousand nineteen, and it is time for us to update it. The most updated, the most recent Atlas fourteen rainfall like, sorry, the update is expected to use one D two D hydraulic modeling concept with the most recent Atlas fourteen rainfall like Harris County Flood Control District did for their update. Like the two thousand nineteen MDP update, it will be a joint venture effort between BDD four and the city. In addition, PDC will be providing one-third of the cost share for this work. The city has already secured funding from GLO. Similarly, staff has communicated with BDD for about the MDP update, and they are on board with the concept. Next one is about FEMA form update. The staff has been in constant communication with Texas Water Development Board to update FEMA form, and it will be a precursor of MDP update as it and its modeling concepts should be agreed upon by FEMA. Based on latest communication, Texas Water Development Board is expecting FEMA funding approval by September of twenty twenty-three and kickoff in early October twenty twenty-three. There is also the update about Mary's Creek improvement. The city this improved, the city put an application for grant funding, and the improvement will consist of winding of Mary's Creek and replacing several structures in Mary's Creek. Grant's application for this project was submitted to Texas Water Development Board State Flood Plan and now elevated to mitigation flood mitigation plan from flood mitigation evaluation by San Jacinto Flood Planning Group. It will be a joint venture project between the city and BDD four. The timeframe for funding is unknown at this time. This slide shows the most awaited project in our area. The timeline for Clear Creek project is shown on the left side of the slide. The major timeline is twenty twenty this summer, no, twenty twenty-four summer. The Project Control District is expecting USAC approval from the headquarter, and by twenty twenty-seven, the project will kick off for the construction, and it is expected to be complete in twenty thirty-two. The picture on the right side shows several drainage projects by Harris County Flood Control District, and several of those are will provide direct benefit to the city. There are three of the projects that is major projects that will help the citizens of Herland. The top one on on the left side is a Reverend Lawson William Detention Pond. That pond has been recently completed, and there will be two additional ponds on the downstream side that will be called as FM nineteen fifty-nine detention and Hughes Detention Basin. So those two will be part of Broad Control District's Clear Creek project. The top one is not a part of that project. With this, I'm going to end my presentation and hand it over to Assistant Director of Capital Projects, Mr. Jameson. Thank you.
Thank you, Raj. So for the next few slides, I just wanted to highlight some of our drainage projects that are run through our engineering and capital projects divisions. As I'm sure you're aware, engineering and CIP took on about two dozen PRs or preliminary engineering ports in twenty twenty-two. So and those were for various potential drainage projects around the city. So what we did, we took that information, we relayed it through the city's bond committee, which was made up of community members as well as elected officials. And so the majority of those drainage projects were vetted and ended up being included in the bond that was taken to voters in May of twenty-three. We also have some projects that are funded by the General Land Office through the Community Development Lot Grants or CDBG, and those funds were secured through our grants division. So those are also some additional drainage projects that we have, and then just some other drainage projects that we have in our CIP. So here we have the the Drainage Bond twenty twenty-three projects. So we have fourteen projects that were included in the bond election. And you can see here, these are the scheduled release dates. The release dates were based on priority of the projects, and that scoring matrix was developed by engineering and reviewed by the bond committee to make the final listing in the fiscal year. Two of the projects, including the Veterans Drainage and Southwest Quadrant of Old Town, those will go to council this fiscal year for approval for a design contract. The veterans drainage entails installing an underground stormwater conveyance system and replacing the roadside ditches that'll connect to the stormwater system on Walnut Road. The Southwest Quadrant of Old Town entails providing drainage improvements, including removal and replacement of driveway sidewalks and driveway culverts and regrading up the roadside ditches. So this one's in negotiation right now. So we have two rounds of GLO projects or the General Land Office projects twenty twenty, and the next slide will be twenty twenty-three. So these projects were noted in the Harvage Drainage Assessment Report. These are currently set to bid out in the near future, and these are going to improve conveyance in the area and help reduce flooding. So the twenty twenty-three ones, so number one and two on this list were actually included in the original PRs to be put on the twenty twenty-three bond. But working with our grants division, we confirmed that these are in the CDBG funding area. So we were able to pull these out of the voter-approved bond and secure funding through the GLO for those. So and that is for design and construction. So and also in this, we included Hickory Slough embankment slope because we had a certain lot of amount of funds, so we tried to maximize that amount of funds. So the first two are, well, all three are currently being advertised through an RFQ that's set to open July sixth. We're going to combine these under one design engineer because there are so many hoops to jump through with the GLO. We figured we would just concentrate our efforts under one design engineer and work seamlessly with our grants coordinator to try to make those as seamless as possible. So the the first two on there will also, you know, improve conveyance, help mitigate flooding, and the third one, we have a failing embankment, so that is just to repair, replace that embankment along Hickory Slough. So some other CIP drainage projects, we have Hickory Slough Regional Detention. So that's in coordination with BDD four, and that is somewhat connected to the McCard project. So once the McCard project is finalized, then I believe we can get our finalization from BDD four, and that project will be complete. The other two projects on there, the Hickory Slough Detention Phase Two, it's actually combined with number three, the Hickory Slough Detention Stormwater Pump Station. So what the Hickory Slough is going to do, obviously, the first part was done back in like twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen, I believe, and this will this will be the other half of that pond. It'll combine to Raj's chart that he showed us earlier for another ninety-five acre feet of detention for the city. It also builds out the pump water station with additional pumps, as well as a standby generator to power the pump station in the case of line loss. And as you may be aware, that project is going to directly precede the Parks Project to build out the rest of the fields. So some of the upcoming project completions that we have on the map here, Cowards Creek Detention Pump Station Generator. So with a lot of these generator pump station projects, what we're seeing is we finish all the work, but the automatic transfer switch materials as well as the generator are taking a long time to come in, between twelve and twenty-four months. So we're finishing a lot of these projects, but we're having trouble getting final or substantial on them because we just are still having some supply chain issues. I don't know when that's going to alleviate, but at least from the electrical components, it hasn't alleviated yet. Wesley subdivision. So the contractor actually requested substantial last week for that one. We will probably have the Uh, we will probably have the, uh, the final or the substantial completion walk, uh, July tenth. Um, so, and I'll be at the H O A tonight talking to the residents, so they'll be happy to hear that. Um, Willow Crest is scheduled to be completed in December of twenty-three and that was, uh, basically the com- the complete, uh, repaving, uh, re-drainage as well as the sanitary sewer component for the Willow Crest subdivision. That was a two-year project, so that's, that's currently on schedule and going well. So here we have, uh, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-seven C I P. So just to note, this, this was approved in October twenty-three, so obviously it doesn't include, uh, the twenty twenty-three bond projects. Uh, the only projects that made the bond that are in here were the Veterans Project, which is included in that twenty-three number and Longwood was actually included in, um, that twenty-three number for design, but we actually pushed that to twenty-four. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Hammond to talk about drainage management.
Thank you, Jameson. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and thank you again for another opportunity to update y'all since, uh, the drainage team commenced or kicked off our new drainage program back in October. Uh, for starters, please allow me to share a quick reminder of why drainage is important and why we provide our drainage services throughout our community. Impacted storm sewers can lead to downstream flooding, often associated with property damage, habitat loss, contamination and erosion, to name a few. Through routine and targeted maintenance activities coupled with necessary capital improvement projects, we believe we can reduce those impacts, uh, the impacts of flooding with on our community. As a recap, prior to fiscal year twenty-three, we merged the right-of-way and streets and drainage services within a single division. This merged allowed for a complete streets approach to right-of-way management and twenty-nine employees were assigned to provide all facets of right-of-way management, including street repair, drainage maintenance, sidewalk management, grounds maintenance, utility locates, right-of-way permitting, traffic sign management, pavement marking and hot shot services. In total, only six employees inclusive of the service supervisor were assigned to drainage roles at that time. Due to reduced staffing levels, uh, in streets, maintenance and streets and ma- drainage personnel, excuse me, uh, were routinely shared between the two services to make sure that we had adequate staffing as needs and responses arose. This naturally created challenges for us trying to create a program-based approach. In response to the need to support drainage maintenance services, city council supported a recommendation to increase staffing levels as well as invest in critical drainage maintenance equipment, vital and providing services within our community. Personnel component of that support included seven additional drainage team members, allowing dedicated staff to focus solely on the management of stormwater infrastructure. These personnel coupled with equipment such as grade all, combination cleaner and closed circuit television truck paved the way for the city to begin a systematic approach to drainage management, inclusive of inspections, cleaning and grading of that infrastructure. I'll add that although seven additional positions were added in the twenty-three budget process, several of those positions were deferred, uh, until partial year or postponed until April rather to align with when we anticipated the new equipment to be constructed and delivered to the community. As a snapshot, a city drainage infrastructure, the city has approximately three hundred and twenty-two miles of enclosed storm sewer, which is expanded daily by development activities, a hundred and forty-five miles of open drainage ditch, ten buyout lot, or a hundred and ten, excuse me, buyout lots that we acquired due to past flooding events, over twelve thousand storm sewer inlets and over three hundred detention facilities that are comprised of both private and public ownership. With a dedicated drainage team, engineering staff and key stakeholders, the city is now focused on a ten-year maintenance program, provides grounds maintenance services to seven hundred and fifty-seven acres of drainage and buyout property and provide all emergency response support as it relates to drainage activities. So far this year, we've resolved over ninety work requests, restored sixteen and a half miles of open drainage ditch and inspected just a little under a hundred and seventy-nine of those detention ponds. For those members of the public attending or possibly watching online who may not be familiar with the breadth of the enclosed drainage infrastructure, we offer this glimpse of the drainage system that spans the entire community. Keep in mind that there's an additional one hundred and forty-five miles of open ditch not represented in this map that typically run parallel to our asphalt streets and connect stormwater to our receiving streams. I'll call your attention to the Massey Ranch area, which will soon add many miles of enclosed storm sewer into the city's inventory. And to put it into perspective, if we were to connect all underground storm sewer end-to-end, it would span from the city hall to just inside the Oklahoma border. So what got us here today? You may recall that on March second of twenty twenty-two, while draining this elevated water storage tank just behind city hall, uh, for necessary maintenance purposes, city staff observed large amounts of water ponding around the tank and not draining into the storm sewer. Upon inspection, staff found a large root obstruction impacting the storm sewer's ability to perform. That root remains in our city offices and serves as a reminder of what can happen when we defer maintenance or just work on a reactionary-based approach. As mentioned, in addition to the vital personnel, city council supported the expansion of drainage services by the purchase of a C C T V truck, instrument- instrumental and inspection of underground storm sewer infrastructure, a combination cleaner vital in jetting compacted storm sewer lines and removing soils from culverts, a grade all necessary to reestablish flow lines and open ditches, as well as the approval of an outsourced service contract necessary to supplement our in-house activities and ensure achievement of our committed performance goals. This was a total investment of just over two point one million dollars. While staff have been actively focused on drainage since establishment of this expanded drainage service, I want to point out that the team was met with delays in receiving the C C T V truck due to assembly and equipping, but we did receive that truck just two weeks ago and it's now been put into inventory or service, I should say. To showcase a few successes from this proactive approach, staff found several storm sewer, sanitary sewer and open ditch impact since we've commenced. First I'll highlight is a large stormwater infiltration issue, which is located on Walnut Street. While jetting a storm sewer to remove debris, staff identified that discharge water from the combination cleaner was not outfalling into the adjacent open ditch. This prompted staff to begin an M D investigation, which resulted in identifying a pipe separation that was allowing stormwater into a damaged sanitary sewer line. The image to the right captures introduced green dye used by the team to determine where leaks exist. In this case, you can see the green dye, which was introduced into the storm sewer, entering a sanitary sewer line underground and ultimately discharging into the sanitary sewer manhole. I will ask you to recall previous, uh, water and wastewater C P I discussions where the team highlighted inflow and infiltration challenges and the need to leverage continued C I P projects to, uh, resolve those issues and to reduce the amount of stormwater making its way into our wastewater treatment plants. All of that water does have to be traded, treated by a wastewater treatment plant before being discharged into a receiving stream, so it just adds more to our system. Our next find has been relatively reoccurring due to large amounts of litter that made its way from the road surface through those twelve thousand plus storm inlets and ultimately into the enclosed pipe system. These before and after images were taken from storm sewer manholes and show the amount of trash that accumulated, causing delayed water movements and impacted pipes. With the use of dedicated team members, debris removal tools and the combination cleaner, staff were able to remove the collected debris and reduce the potential for this litter from advancing downstream, causing continued obstructions and remove the potential for impacted ecosystems along Clear Creek and Galveston Bay and similar waterways that we discharge into. Lastly, I'll call your attention to this segment of enclosed storm sewer. This image was captured at the mouth of a culvert. After years of silt buildup within the pipe, flow was restricted and not only led to delay water movement, but also caused ponding in upstream segments of the ditch, what leads, which leads to grounds maintenance challenges and, uh, health hazard concerns related to mosquito breeding. The team in conjunction, conjunction with the combination cleaner, jetted this line and removed the spoils, allowing water to move more freely and reduce the potential for ponding upstream. So as we wind down, we would like to thank council for their award of, uh, drainage maintenance contract with Texas Drainage and highlight the need for continued partnerships with qualified vendors capable of supplementing our in-house services. To date, we've exhausted eighty-eight percent of that contract value and made those necessary drainage improvements. As staff continue to evaluate maintenance needs and capabilities, these partnerships are vital to our continued success. In the specific case of this vendor, I would encourage you to look at the machine used to provide the ditching surfaces. This machine is proprietary as it's a custom cutting head that was built by the vendor and allows for long linear pulls along the length of the ditch and provides roughly ten feet of cutting in one pass where current staff equipment provides about three foot of cut in one scoop and dump method. In our look ahead, it is important for us to note that we are considering an additional investment of about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars into future budgets to help continue to, uh, supplement in-house services via contracted services. As a result of the program-based approach and a desire to advance systematically throughout the community, staff purpose to inspect, clean and reestablish design flow lines as necessary on a ten-year basis. Year one commenced in Zone A, which is just south of Broadway and west of Old Town. This area includes several large segments of extremely aged infrastructure and was a priority based on work orders as well as historical knowledge. Staff intend to advance counterclockwise from this zone through the remainder of the community. As staff advance, we are monitoring for large impacts to the drainage system that may require capital improvements or additional resources, but so far no major impacts have been identified. And lastly, in order to monitor the team's advancement as well as, uh, track or abnormalities that may warrant engineering review, staff in partnership with amazing members of our G I S team developed a tracking dashboard to capture and communicate completed work. This dashboard will soon be outward facing, so residents are aware of progress and anticipate a timeline for work to reach their areas. Keep in mind, residents may still submit drainage-related work orders, uh, to engineering and public works, so staff can evaluate those concurrent to the program and make a determination on the appropriateness to address. I'll note that city council approved a work order management system, that was City Works, uh, which we use daily to track work and monitor assets. That dashboard or that City Works is what feeds this dashboard here. To date, the team's completed over sixteen and a half miles of ditch survey and grading and inspected or cleaned almost eight miles of enclosed storm sewer. This is above our target goal of fifteen miles for open ditch maintenance annually and slightly behind course for that target of thirty-three miles, uh, for our enclosed maintenance, uh, which is associated with the timing of equipment delivery and onboarding of staff as we had anticipated. Another component of this first round includes the inventorying of drainage assets, which has an additional impact to timing and completion. And as identified as a city council strategic priority milestone, the team will continue to measure and monitor the effectiveness and productivity of this drainage service and team for this first year and provide a comprehensive update prior to the closeout of the fiscal year. And with that, I'll thank y'all for another opportunity and turn it back over to Jameson.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Uh, so that concludes the, uh, the drainage portion of the C I P update. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll leave it to your discretion. Would you like to do questions now or would you like to wait till the, uh, the finalization of?
Uh, we'll do, we'll do them with each drainage and then transportation to break it up just a little bit.
Okay.
Uh, so with that, thank you for, uh, thank you for all of that staff. Lot, as always, lots of good work. What's interesting with, with drainage, especially, uh, the new drainage program is it's work that we really can't see, right? Especially the enclosed pipe, we can't see the work that's going on there, uh, cleaning out some of the ditches and reshaping those and re-establishing the bottoms and all that. Obviously you can see that as you drive by, but it's just, it's not a brand new road, it's not a brand new building, it's not something that's brand new that we see and it's shiny and all that kind of stuff. Uh, but I'll highlight, you know, we're in the midst of storm season, so this work is critical, critical, critical. And so I'm so glad we were able to move forward with this piece of it. Uh, really glad that we're getting all the equipment in and, and, uh, into inventory and into use and, uh, hopefully that will allow us to propel a little bit quicker and get that program going and get into that, get into that rhythm of that program. So, uh, no telling how many dollars potentially can be saved through, you know, mitigation of floods, uh, as a result of this program. So, uh, but it's the right program and it's the right work and, and so, uh, really glad we got a good look on the front end of this of even in the, uh, I guess probably up and running, Eric, really truly up and running four months?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, that's a, that's a fair assessment.
Yeah. So, you know, barely, barely crawling and barely in and in, in its infancy and we get that program up and running and really going, going well. It's gonna be interesting. You'll probably catch up on some of the things that you're behind on just by, by getting it up and, and rolling. So I'm so, so glad we brought that as part of it, um, as well as just kind of an update as we, uh, roll the rest of our C I P drainage forward. With that, I'm just gonna turn it over to questions, comments, concerns from council?
Hey, real quick, Mayor, um, I just wanna give you guys kudos because, um, a while back we'd received some, some commentary from some na- uh, citizens or residents in Wesley and I happened to just drive by and check it out, but you guys are doing some great work over there and, uh, you know, the ditches and all the work that you guys are doing is just fantastic. So, help those citizens, uh, really appreciate the work that y'all are putting into it. So, uh, job well done there. Thank you very much.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Barry. I'd be remiss not to offer my appreciation to Dante and his team just behind me to my left. Dante and his, uh, leadership team, he is the superintendent over our right-of-way services and really leads the charge as the tip of the spear and does a brilliant job with these programs.
Great job, Dante. Thank you.
Mayor Proten, you got a comment?
Jameson, on, uh, slide fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Um, our, our, uh, G O L, uh, portion that we received was, I think, it was fourteen, fourteen point eight million. There's a little over eleven million there. Um, the other three million, is there something that's not on the list that hadn't been brought to start or where, where are we looking at the other three, four million?
So I believe, I think we had fourteen point two. I believe the budget for those figures are, uh, construction dollars. I don't think he included the, uh, engineering dollars. Uh, Joel puts these figures together. Um, that money isn't budgeted within the C I P, so I never truly see what's in there. Um, I can, uh, I can get with Joel and give you a better answer to that.
Okay. I was just curious the, the difference. I knew it was somewhere in the fourteen.
Fourteen point two is what I've been told is how much we have.
It, it's not, uh, three million, but I know in addition to, it's not a, it's not a project, but, uh, one of the things the G L O and that money could be used for is additional study. And so I know, um, Raj, you might.
That's correct. Uh, five hundred thousand.
Yeah, there's, there's another like.
Five hundred thousand is dedicated for master drainage plan update too.
Updating the master drainage plan.
There was, there was two point one earmarked for, uh, professional services and then another six hundred or seven hundred thousand for, uh, project management. So that might be those figures.
Okay. Uh, it just, it was a little light and that's, I was just curious to.
We're gonna use all of it.
Okay. Uh, I figured you would. Thank you.
The good news is we got a, uh, a large check at H G A C last week. Uh, the G L O was there and passing out the, uh, the programs that have already approved, they've already been able to approve. There's many more that are being approved on a daily basis going through, uh, all of our processes here at H G A C. So it was kinda nice to be, uh, not only there for a board meeting, but, but have the city, you know, uh, you know, they, they, they didn't let me leave with the check. I was disappointed. I wa- I wanted that, that check, but anyway, uh, but, uh, yeah, it was good to see and, uh, good to be in the room and they called it out, so. And thank you to all the staff. It took a yeoman's effort from, uh, to get through the G L O process from, you know, the grant writing to, um, engineering projects, uh, public works, everybody that touches this, you know, all of that input goes into it. And, you know, you get judged on how complete and how good and how tight your program is and how good your application is. And so, uh, it's, it's good that we, uh, that we got that approved. Any other questions, comments? Carbo?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, um, thanks staff for a great presentation. Um, the Wesley subdivision, glad to hear that you're going to the H O A tonight, so if you need to step out early, we'll understand. That, um, that project. That, that project, I mean, I think it's gonna be the first of many with a lot of issues in terms of drainage and dealing with some older areas that are more established. And so we've got to get this one right to move forward. So I'm glad to hear you're headed back out there because we're all gonna hear about it if it's not wrapped up correct. So I wrote down, what, July tenth for the substantial completion?
That's the tentative date right now. Most of this, our staff is at APWA conference this week, so next week's a holiday. So the week of July tenth is most likely when the substantial completion walk will go through.
All right.
And we're collecting a consistent list from the homeowners too of individual issues that they'd like to see corrected. So we're, we're trying to work with them as best as possible to get it.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments? Good stuff. Yeah, and same thing, since we kind of went back with the, some of the list of questions and comments on that, the HOA that we got in, really haven't heard anything, you know, since then. I think getting the project wrapped up, cleaned up, and instruction kind of ceasing and getting some finality to it will be good. But to remember Carbone's point, you know, we, we've done several other, I would say, older neighborhoods that we've retroed, Collin or Oregon, we're in the midst of Willacrust. This is an open ditch one at Wesley. And each one of them, you know, regency, each one of them has had their own ups and downs and all of that. And so learning best practices, learning how we deal with the public, learning how we go through that. As I tell each one of those, you know, as you go into it, it's like a bridge replacement here at Green Tea, you know, it's inconvenient, dirty, it's not fun, it's gonna be loud, it's construction, but it's necessary and we need it to move on. And, and there's only one way to go through it and that's put your head down and go through it at some level. And so at the same time, being as, being as, you know, open and helping people through the process as we go. And I'll tell you, you've got some good superintendents, some good project management folks that are working through those neighborhoods. They got special skills to deal with neighbors and people. And so Yeoman's work in, in, in both of those locations going on right now, over at Wesley as well, as well as Willacrust. So great work. All right, we'll move on. Anything else to add?
Sure. So as they reset, so we can get started on the transportation piece, just to reiterate what you have heard, when we went through looking at a bond package versus other mechanisms to fund drainage a couple of years ago, a key, a key piece of that was the maintenance of that infrastructure and maintenance of our existing infrastructure. So again, thank council for setting up the drainage fund, providing the personnel and the equipment to stand that up properly. And then just Eric and Dante and their team being able to show that, you know, set, set the plan forth and then start executing that plan. Cause you know, I think when we started executing it, it was, well, let's, you know, we think we can do it in ten years and let's see how that goes. And I think we're still evaluating that, but the, the start of it has been very impressive to me. So I just wanted to, to thank the council for getting that set up and thank their team for really getting it kicked off on the right foot, so.
Well, if we don't set a target of ten years, we'll never hit anything, so.
Exactly.
That's a good way to start.
We'll start, jump into transportation now.
Okay, so I'll start this one off. So we're switching from drainage to transportation and we're gonna go over some of the system overview, some traffic transportation projects. We're gonna dive into a little bit more of the operations and maintenance of the traffic division. I don't think that's something that we've done before, so we wanted to kind of make that a focus. We'll go through some of the upcoming project milestones and then Mr. Hammond's gonna give us some O and M on street and sidewalk projects. So here's the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-seven five-year CIP. So I just wanted to put this up because the city works pretty tirelessly with our, with our outside funding, with our TERS, with our HGAC, the Transportation Improvement Program. So I just wanted to show that we utilize those. Project completions, so the department's completed several important projects in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Two of the larger assets obviously are the Pearland Parkway Traffic Circle, which I think has, has gained a more positive reputation in the last few months than maybe the first few months it was opened. The concept was to have the traffic circle open prior to the McCord Road project as a lot more traffic is gonna be funneled down west of McCord to two eighty-eight. So that, that, that concept was accomplished. We, we opened the traffic circle in September of twenty twenty-two and then McCord was opened in April of twenty twenty-three. So McCord was also a LGPP project, so that was an eighty-twenty split. And this connection is really gonna gain a lot more prominence in the coming years. As you're aware, the FM five eighteen project is in the future, not as far away as we may think. The, the western section, which is Old Chocolate Bayou to two eighty-eight, is set to go into construction in twenty twenty-five. And then the eastern portion, which is Old Chocolate Bayou to McLean, is already at thirty percent design. I'm not sure when that's gonna be let, but it could be sooner than later. So some of the construction contracts that we have going right now, Safe Routes to School, this is another federally funded project, so eighty-twenty split. And this is gonna provide a, you know, safe location for three different elementary schools in the area. Bailey Road, I don't want to talk about Broadway Dixie Farm. Bailey Road is a twenty nineteen bond project, so that's going to complete the rest of the roadway from Veterans to thirty-five. That includes the other half of the bridge and that's going to basically complete that thoroughfare. So our east-western thoroughfares are coming into existence the way that we have them planned out in the overall thoroughfare plan. So that'll be important in a slide that I have coming up later. Also, we have the traffic signal upgrades program going on. Our traffic division is managing the primary management of those. So this one is the Magnolia Corridor, which is going on right now. So that, that replaces outdated equipment like the cabinets, the detection system and the PTCs, which are the, the pan tilt cameras that PD uses. So this one is Magnolia Corridor and then there also is another one that I believe is twenty-nine various intersections throughout the city that'll also be replaced. And those are ongoing. So some design contracts we have, and talking about the TERS funding, so the Shadow Creek Parkway Landscaping Street Lighting Sidewalks project, as well as the intersection improvements in Shadow Creek, those are also TERS-funded. And that only shows the design contract, but the construction value estimated on those is about eight million. The Parkway Landscape Lighting Contract, it's about six and a half million, I believe, for the Shadow Creek Ranch Intersection Improvements. So that intersection improvement is gonna be, is gonna be a big project. So that's going to improve the circulation on Business Center Drive with, that's a heavy collision area, especially between the HEB exit and five eighteen going to the south. But we're also gonna hit intersections at Broadway, so Broadway and Business Center, Broadway Kirby, Broadway Kingsley, as well as Shadow Creek. So that's Shadow Creek Kingsley, Shadow Creek Trinity Bay, and Shadow Creek, Shadow Creek Kirby and Business Center. So some of the other design contracts, another twenty nineteen bond project, that's the Sherwood Streets and Drainage Project. So that, with that project and the Hickory Salute Detention and the Bailey Road, those are the final twenty nineteen bond projects. So we're still on a pretty good pace to get those closed out and finished. We're also coordinating some mobility in five eighteen corridor studies with HGAC and Yolsey will talk about those a little bit later on. So talked about tip funding a little bit earlier. So in twenty twenty-two, we submitted three hundred and twenty-five million dollars worth of projects to the HGAC's Call for Projects. So some of these are shown here in blue. We're currently going through that process. We're on step two right now. That's, it's supposed to start up in July, so we will try to gain access to those funds as much as possible. So you, and you can kind of see from this map and what was, what I was saying earlier, it was the city strategy to primarily focus on the east-west corridors early on. We have, you know, McCord finalized, Bailey's about to be finalized, we have five eighteen. So you can see now we're kind of focusing more on the northwest or north-south with gaining access to the Beltway from within the city. So and with that, I think I'm going to hand it over to Yolsey Ruiz to go over the transportation system overview.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I believe most of you know everybody here, but I can take this opportunity to introduce myself. So my name is Yolsey Ruiz and I'm the traffic engineer for the city. I wanted to show you guys the slide for that traffic system, transportation system overview. Most of you drive the cities, the roads in Pearland. And most of the transportation system comprises of like major and secondary thoroughfares, major and minor collectors and local streets. And this helps us with the mobility throughout our city. But it also includes our school zones, our city facilities, our communication systems, and our traffic signals. A little bit of history on our signals, the city took over the traffic signals from Taxol in twenty-eleven and back then we had fifty-five traffic signals. In twenty eighteen, we grew and we have ninety-one signals. And as of now, we have grown to have a hundred and fourteen signals, which include ten signals that we maintain as part of our interlocal agreement with Presoria County. Our traffic division has six employees, a traffic engineer, a traffic maintenance supervisor, and four traffic signal technicians that maintain the hundred and fourteen signals within the city. I'm happy to announce that we hired our last technician back in August of twenty twenty-two, which is a big accomplishment for our department. A little bit of our fiscal year twenty twenty-three for our thoroughfare plan update. So as a lot of you know, we have partnerships with HGAC and we conduct studies to evaluate the intersections and roadway network within our city. We have the Pearland Transit Needs Assessment and Plan, which is an ongoing plan right now. They have had several public meetings and that is a hundred percent funded by, from HGAC. The Pearland Mobility Study and the FM five eighteen corridor study are funded ninety-ten, ninety from HGAC, ten percent from us. And those, both studies will be used to analyze the city of Pearland roadway network. These studies have been used to assist in developing capital improvement projects such as road widening, dual left turns, right turn lanes, timing changes, and intersection improvements. And the last study is the, a study from, that comes from the Traffic Operations Department. It's an intelligent transportation system and operation management. This will help us create a study to have a five-year plan on how, what are the staffing needs that we need and the equipment that we need for our division. Our phase one is now being studied by a consultant, which we are studying in conjunction with him to get those needs addressed. And not only that, in the past two years, the traffic division has projected the need to establish short-term, midterm, and long-term projects. For the short-term projects, we started a program to replace all span wire and signal cables at various span wire intersections. For the short-term right now, we have three intersections that we currently send a bid out. It will be Broadway at Wood Creek, Main and Bailey, and Main and Nunnie. And what helps us with that is to make sure that span and all the cable is reinforced. For the midterm projects, our existing school flasher equipment is no longer available, badly to report that, but the need for a new system has arisen, which we are currently testing. And we will be deploying, if successful, really soon before the school year or just keep maintaining the existing one and get to that point. Another of the midterm projects is our grant application. We're participating in a grant application with different entities in the Houston region for our smart lock system. Around the region, all the entities, we have realized the need to secure our traffic signal cabinets. There's a lot of equipment and there's a lot of potential ways so that the cabinets could be harmed. It could be by a physical attack or by a cyber attack. And we need to have that alternative to secure it. The smart lock system is a new alternate to our number two key that is very commonly accessible to anybody. This will provide the ability to perform a remote unlock. So if a contractor comes and wants to open our cabinet, they're not able to do so, they have to go through us. We also include, it will include a smart key in case there's an issue with the system, then we can override it, but we will have that on our possession. It will help with the loss of damage of the smart lock system. It also has the wifi and internet connectivity that will let us know who is accessing our traffic signal cabinets. For the long term, as I mentioned, we have the ITS or Intelligent Transportation System and Operations Management Plan. Like I said, it will help for us to develop a plan for the hundred and fourteen signals. One, right now we have sixty connected at our traffic management center. Once we are improving the fiber projects and then everything is connected, we need to have more staff to help us maintain and monitor the hundred and fourteen signals. The challenges that we're facing right now, as I mentioned just now, the signals that we have connected through fiber in our DMC, we don't have the staff to look and operate them constantly. We do need staffing. We are requesting like having two DMC operators, which they could monitor the signals like the whole week. And then two additional traffic signal technicians, just because the growth of our signals have been exponentially, a hundred and fourteen are not enough for our current staff. And also the equipment lead time, I'm not sure if most of you are aware, but a lot of the traffic signal cabinets, traffic equipment, chips, streetlights, and a lot of the parts are outdated, it's constantly, we're constantly changing to new systems. So all of that, the lead time, it just, it has become a hindrance to our staff. And I wanted to give a little bit of a overview of what the daily task is for our, for technicians. The maintenance of the signals include the troubleshooting of internal components in the traffic signal cabinet and the field hardware. Our technicians do have, we're required to assist in any, any emergency, any, anything that comes into our plate. And, but these are the main daily tasks that they perform. They must have an ability to have knowledge on pulling cable, operating a bucket truck, wiring electrical components in the systems, and also provide traffic control to be able to be safe and on the road. And I wanted to just, I could read them all, but you can see there's a lot of them for the traffic signal components. Outside daily tasks that we do, as I said, that traffic division works in conjunction with different departments within the city. A lot of them is like many emergencies that we have. If a resident or something gets damaged driver behavior, right? If they damage any equipment within the city, we have to assist, we have to provide a solution because you cannot have a traffic signal hanging for days or you cannot have a cabinet hit and just not operating. So I wanted to show you the highlights of our group. We have successfully installed the decorative signal base at County Road ninety and Magnolia. We also repaired the pedestrian pole that got hit at two eighty-eight at Broadway. And PD helped us with that as well, just for the traffic control portion, since it's a big intersection. We also successfully deployed a new traffic signal detection system at Broadway and McLean and Walnut and McLean intersections. at our Broadway and McLean and Walnut and McLean intersections. And we provide traffic control for the CGR poles installation throughout the whole city. One of the highlights for this is actually our deployment of the GPS emergency vehicle preemption. The preemption system brings together the combination of hardware and advanced software to improve response time from our emergency vehicles in a safety manner. We had tested Broadway, we had tested Bailey, we had tested Magnolia, and we're finalizing like few intersections that have a special timing progression. So we can assist our emergency vehicles with it. Additional accomplishments through the past year and a half, that traffic signal department successfully turned out seven signals, five along McCarr Road since the road just opened, one along Broadway and one along Perlin Parkway. We also oversaw the span wire rebuild at three intersections on Broadway. We have deployed several traffic counters for the traffic calming committee at various intersections. And we have also completed preventive maintenance at six intersections to make the necessary repairs. And so what that means is like any internal component or outside component that is not working properly, we replace any wiring, push buttons. It, it takes, it takes more than one day to do all this. And to finalize, I wanted to let you guys know that the traffic division is still comparing the high-pressure sodium fixtures to LED fixtures throughout the city. We had made repairs along Collin Parkway and two eighty-eight. Some street lights are no longer available due to the equipment lead time, as I mentioned, and some of the upgrades. This is the case for the street lights along Main Street. They have been down for quite a while. And one of the pictures, as you can see, if most of you recognize the one on the left handmost, it's on Main Street. They don't have that fixture anymore. So what we needed to do is have a conversion kit. So that, so that the current can actually go and go through the whole road of thirteen signal, uh, street light heads. But the repairs are underway. We got the equipment as of last week and it just takes time to do the repairs. So again, thank you for your time. And with this, I will turn it over to Mr. Gary Hammond.
Eric, if I could jump in real quick. Yolsey also oversees our traffic calming committee. So she works with the PD as well as Fire Department and looking at any traffic calming measures or any issues where we have complaints from citizens that we need to look at. So just wanted to mention she's also involved in that, leads that group. All yours, Mr. Hammond.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Ms. Yolsey. And as well, thank y'all again, Mayor and Council for an opportunity to highlight our team who manages our streets and our sidewalk program. As shared previously, the Engineering and Public Works Department merged traditional right-of-way services with our streets and drainage, drainage services over two years ago. There are nine team members currently dedicated to providing all street and sidewalk maintenance activities for our community. In lieu of a street maintenance team that has remained static, although transportation infrastructure has grown by sixty-nine percent in streets and seventy percent in sidewalks since two thousand and six, the team continues to perform and achieve milestones. While previously ill-equipped, those nine team members, stakeholders such as Tech Dot in Missouri County, as well as supporting engineering staff, continue to provide maintenance to nine hundred and eighty miles of streets and over six hundred and seventeen miles of sidewalks. Some highlights of their accomplishments include replacing approximately ten miles of pavement marking annually, improved traffic sign maintenance, which we try, we strive rather, to inspect and replace signs on a seven-year rotation, completed five and a half miles of road rehabilitation, replaced three point three miles of sidewalk, awarded a pavement condition survey for two thousand and twenty-three, closed over five hundred and fifty-two work orders and replaced several key pieces of equipment since we presented last. As mentioned, the city provides maintenance to approximately nine hundred and eighty miles of roadway comprised of both asphalt and concrete streets. For the public, we offer this quick snapshot to illustrate how those street miles are comprised, as well as show that the mileage spans the full breadth of our community. The span is impactful to consider because if we were to connect each street mile end-to-end, the road would extend from City Hall to the Minnesota border. And should we do the same for our sidewalks, it would reach from here all the way to the top of the Texas Panhandle. With any asset of this magnitude, there's tremendous potential for failure and need for maintenance. Keep in mind that while development occurs on a daily basis, Shadow Creek Ranch infrastructure is over twenty years old and some of our more established areas of town, such as Dixie Wood or Green Tea, are over forty-four years old. You couple that with the amount of construction activity in the right-of-way, shifting soils and aging canopies of our trees, as well as public use, it leads to a much higher potential for damage and maintenance. Moving forward, the city intends to continue a data-driven approach to pavement management. City Council awarded a contract with Infrastructure Management Services this year and that contract will allow for surveying of those nine hundred and eighty lane miles of roadway to identify the condition of the roadway, which is assessed by distress type, distress quantities and severities. It will also include all peripheral items such as pavement marking and traffic signs, as well as the sidewalks, which we'll talk about very soon. The sidewalk survey, excuse me, the survey, street survey kicked off in May and is forecasted to take approximately four months to complete with deliverables planned to be presented all the way back and finalized in December of this year. We first surveyed the city in two thousand and fourteen and at that time, the city received an average network PCI score of seventy-two, which is slightly higher than our target goal of seventy. I'll share this side briefly, as council has seen it before, but it's our intention, based on a data-driven approach, to invest early and incrementally across our entire transportation network to reduce the potential for major degradation of road quality, which will occur when maintenance is deferred. The city conducted two prior pavement condition surveys to date. First full study was in two thousand and fourteen and the second was in two thousand and seventeen in response to Hurricane Harvey. And that was specifically targeted at identifying the impacts of floodwater to our asphalt street network. Twenty fourteen, that overall pavement condition was again seventy-two, which placed our network average within the satisfactory range. As a result of that study and based on budget forecasting provided by our consultant, it was estimated the city should invest about four point nine million dollars annually over the course of five years, and that was to maintain that average score of seventy-two. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to make that target budget goal. And as such, we anticipate the results of these twenty-three surveys to not only show a need for an increased budget amount, but also deterioration or decline in our average PCI score. I'll add that budget request was suggested for five years and that, that's simply to make sure that the municipalities are surveying our communities and that the data that we have is actionable and relevant and not outdated. And I'll also add that Engineering and Public Works did recommend setting our new target goal of seventy as our PCI, which is still in the satisfactory range. And it's also five points higher than the national average for streets in the southern portion of the United States. As a quick highlight to the investment of budget dollars, the team replaced all of the asphalt streets within the Garden Acres and Clear Creek Estates subdivision. This was a total investment of one point six million dollars and improved some of our most failed or fatigued asphalt subdivision streets. Previously, Garden Acres had an average PCI of forty-four, while Clear Creek Estates had an average score of thirty-eight. Both of these subdivisions contain streets with deficiencies ranging from potholes and rutting, alligator cracking. After construction, we anticipate these roads to receive an updated PCI score in the upper nineties. But more importantly, the calls for complaints and service requests have declined and we've even received quite a few positive bits of feedback from our residents in these areas. In addition to contractual and in-house street maintenance, the team has a positive and impactful working relationship with Missouri County and we do leverage that relationship regularly, specifically during times of interlocal activities. In the past two years, the county has paved almost seven miles of roads with an additional four point one miles of roads planned for this twenty-three program year. The areas to be improved in this year's plan include Walnut, specifically behind Aldi. You may have received some calls for support there. So that's in the twenty-three, twenty-three plan. Fight Road, Garden Road, Hawk and Hill House are all included. And in fact, support, you know, will come up in the July ten meeting. Staff will be recommending to council for support of the FY twenty-three interlocal paving agreement, as well as two supporting material contracts that are necessary to carry that, that agreement to fruition. Moving forward, we intend to further develop a program-based approach with crack sealing and award additional street reconstruction projects similar to Clear Creek and Garden Acres, but that's contingent upon the completion of our PCI survey, so we can maintain that data-driven approach. As we begin to close out, I'd like to touch on the sidewalk management plan, accomplishments and path forward. Few highlights include our largest concrete repair contract ever awarded was awarded this year, which allowed the reinvestment of over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars back into our sidewalk network and almost two hundred and eighty thousand dollars back into some key concrete street repairs. Some of you may recall some concerns for student drivers on Euler Drive near the, near the south parking lot. I believe that's South Parking Lot, right at Euler and Main Street. This contract allowed for those necessary repairs. Some of you may have received calls for the Country Place Community. This contract also allowed for some necessary concrete street repairs in that subdivision. Additionally, I'm happy to report that all the backlog sidewalk repair work orders that migrated to the right-of-way division have been completed. Our inventory of reactive work order history is now current and the team has completed over three point three miles of replacement within this contract. All contract dollars have been invested and high priority repairs completed in Zones A, E and B. Other highlights is that we are conducting the PCI survey and that PCI survey is gonna again capture all the peripheral, which includes sidewalks, and we're gonna use that information to mine out our sidewalk gaps. That will help us then develop a sidewalk gap program. So looking forward to bringing that to you soon. Speaking of program-based approaches, the city continues to operate a program that separates a city into five sections. These are some of the sections I just highlighted that were completed. These sections do direct how staff advance systematically across the community to make repairs. Currently, there's just under eight hundred open sidewalk repairs in our system. Two hundred and forty-six of those have received a high priority based on staff inspection in our, in our sidewalk repair matrix that we use to direct and prioritize our work. As mentioned, the team's completed over three point three miles of sidewalk replacement, but new requests are submitted on a daily basis. And based on the average cost estimates, the current repair value of known work is estimated at just over a million dollars. Notice I said that that is known work because we have not started our proactive inspection process. As illustrated in the far right side of the map, we did conduct a small pilot project in the Dixie Wood subdivision. And on that far right edge of the screen, you'll see that the data points are almost solid. It's through proactive inspections like this that we will begin to leverage our colleagues in the CIP team to help us create a project to replace all the sidewalks as, in one, in one project, as opposed to ten foot, fifteen feet at a time or incremental repairs. Lastly, with voter support of the bond, staff intend to take a two-pronged approach to sidewalk management. First, staff will complete the inventory of our sidewalks along with the subsequent gaps. Then we'll partner with a consultant to develop a sidewalk gap criteria and priority ranking system, as well as develop construction documents necessary for us to bid out the work in the future. I'll share that as we consider gap reductions across the city, there will be a few key items that we need to consider. Those include things like utility relocation, ADA requirements, and even potential bridge installations if we are going to mitigate all the gaps that we have in our community. That said, that does justify the need for a project approach to this. The second prong would be reinvest approximately one million dollars annually into the sidewalk reinvestment fund, which would be in addition to the annual operations budget. And these dollars would then be used to make all reactive repairs submitted annually and support the proactive inspection of sidewalks, allowing for development of a full sidewalk replacement program. With that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Epperson. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. So just a couple of wrap-up comments. I think, you know, what you see here is different than what we've done with the motor pool, where we're reinvesting and what we need there and where we've invested in the, in the drainage fund. We've got many other areas that, like the sidewalks, where we have done the two thousand and twenty-three bond program, but the traffic signals in the streets where we are still, we need to make those a priority. We need to start building towards getting enough dollars in those areas to maintain our infrastructure for the long haul, so that we have that infrastructure revitalized when it should be as, as our city continues to age. So many needs that we have across the board and we have to weigh all those together, but I'm glad we're able to kind of get into a little bit of the, the needs and the details of those two areas that maybe haven't seen all the details on traffic before. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, we'll turn to council for any questions, comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Jameson, I know you wanted to skip over, but can you go back to slide thirty-seven on the Dixie Farm Broadway intersection?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure there's more. I'd like to elaborate on why you wanted to skip it.
I was just being kind of smart. No, we're, we're moving along in that project. We had a couple of hiccups. We had a plumbing line that was in conflict and then we had some franchise utilities that were in conflict. So we're just working through some issues there. I know there's been some public comment on it. One of the reasons is we only, we can only work from nine to four. So a lot of people don't see him out there. So we're, we're working through it. Yes, sir.
So based on that, I mean, obviously a lot of these conflicts, a lot of these issues, they, they happen. You open up the ground and there's a, there's a gas line or there's something.
Any, any major intersection like that.
You know it's there, you just don't know the depth. If you open it up. Maybe this is something with communications that we push that out and we do some pushing in that immediate area of just letting them know, because we do get asked, why, why is it stopped? What's going on? What's, what's happening? And, and those things are, they happen. It's part of construction. Not anyone's fault, you just, you just don't know. You get ready. I didn't mean to take that away.
Yeah, that makes sense. Any kind of updated schedule on completion for that?
Well, the, the contractual completion is in August. The contractor is still saying he's, he's gonna make that. I'm, I'm a realist, so I don't know if I see that happening, but we're working through it. We're trying to push them pretty hard to get, to get done as fast as possible.
I'm sure you're having to do redesign of utilities. Is that what it is?
Uh, it's just, it's just getting the, the companies out there to, to come out there and do them.
Center Point, AT&amp;T, the like out there?
Yes, sir, and there were some private plumbing lines that we had to move that we didn't realize were there.
I have a couple of questions. On, on slide thirty-six, I think it was, Jameson, you said McCard. You said the McCard Road project was, I don't know if you said funded or something, but you said something really fast and I didn't hear what you said.
So it's, it's an LGPP, so Local Government Project Procedures. Those are, so when we, when I was talking about TIP, the Transportation Improvement Program, so when they're TIP, I don't know exactly all the, the layers to it, but they turn into the LGPP projects. And so those are an eighty-twenty split. So that's when we developed the advanced funding agreement with Tech Dot and they, they pick up eighty percent of that. So you saw the forty-eight million on there. But that was covered primarily by Tech Dot through the Federal Highway Commission.
So yeah, anytime we hear TIP or LGPP, those are the federally or state-funded projects where about eighty percent of the funding comes from outside sources.
Oh, I heard it was me and I didn't see it on there. I was like, what was that? Okay, so, sorry.
And then, and then everybody has to take a class as well to be certified in LGPP.
And then I had one more real quick question. On slide forty-six, when, when you mentioned the GPS emergency vehicle preemption, is that, do you tell her, is that for? Is that for? Well, Trent, you'll know.
He didn't want to answer.
I can try to answer that.
Yes, man, so that, that is the, what we call generically Opticom. But it is the signal preemption system and it's GPS-based. So as, as the, the fire equipment or EMS is dispatched, it turns that signal in the direction they're it turns that signal in the direction they're heading in, green. So it clears the intersection and then allows them to proceed through the intersection safely, but much more quickly if they have to maneuver through to stop traffic or wait for the signal to change.
Do we have that throughout Pearland?
This project will have it throughout Pearland at the completion of the project. I think Yelsey, where are we?
One hundred and ten intersections, I believe. They'll have that in all one hundred and ten. And that'll, all our responding fire apparatus and ambulances will have that technology onboard to expedite through those interest, intersections, reducing wear and tear, stop time, hopefully reducing accidents.
And that's up to our techs to put in?
So we contracted it out for a company, but our techs got the training in case anything comes out, because you have to program it in the cabin, in the controller. So our techs got, I got trained into how to get those things out.
Oh, okay.
And where is it up and running?
It's up and running on Broadway, Bailey, Magnolia, and we're testing out the other intersections. I think they tested out most of the trucks or some of them, but we are almost there.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Thanks, Mayor. Couple of things, slide thirty-nine. Slide thirty-nine, TIP funding, you show, you show here that y'all have requested on Max and O'Day. Can, can I explain to me what that entails? Is that just like a resurface or what, what's the story there? What's it going to look like when it's done if you were to get the funding?
So these are all submitted to match the ultimate cross-section of those. So if they are a secondary or major thoroughfare, these are submitted for funding to take them to their four-lane concrete curb and gutter boulevard cross-section. If it's a, if it's a major collector, that's more like an Orange Street-type cross-section where it's either four or two wide lanes, depending on, like Old Alvin is a major collector. So it just, it depends on the classification in our thoroughfare plan, and we submit it for that. But most of these are going to be secondary or primary thoroughfares, four-lane boulevard.
Yeah, yeah. And so I, I see that they've been submitted, but y'all have any update on when, when and if those are going to be approved or not?
So I think Jameson mentioned there in kind of step two of where we are on the TIP call right now, that is going to extend into this fall. I think the current schedule has funding being allocated and projects selected by the end of the year, but my experience doing the call for project for many, many years is that, that schedule rarely stays on schedule. So earliest we'll know is probably this fall. It could slide to next year.
It's kind of ish. I got you. And only one other question. I think Trent, you and I talked about this a little bit. Fire station number eight, you know, I pulled this up earlier, and I've driven by there, you know, and so it looks like there's, there's somewhat of a little hacked up crossroad right there for the fire truck to come out of the fire station both ways. But why can't we, why can't we just add a little section right there? Or, you know, to keep them from having to go all the way down the light and doing a U-turn and all these other things? You know, it seems like it could be a pretty easy addition to that crossing in the median.
And I think that was our initial request from TechDOT is to have full access there, just based on how close it is to the bridge, its distance to the next intersection. TechDOT controls not only the driveways, but any median openings along that thoroughfare. And so we have to work through them for that. So we made the modifications to the, the bridge railing, and we're able to get the access out of the station. I believe we're going back through an effort right now to try to get fuller access for the fire trucks themselves to come back in. I don't know if we got a recent update on where we stand with that, but maybe we can get an update.
We are actually trying to schedule a meeting with the, we scheduled several meetings to discuss the different improvements that we can make. They do need input from our fire department, which we gave them. But as of now, because of the type of roadway that it is, we need a more detailed design, and it will be, we have to get into the bridge. So we have to have like that distance. And right now, how we have it is causing problems to the cross-traffic. They don't want regular, not regular, but drivers using it as a different purpose other than our fire department. So that's the issue right there.
I, I see that. And it looks like y'all just put in like a patch to, so that, to allow them to come out there and turn left. So I can see where it could be a problem for cross-traffic.
Yeah, just to add on to it, we have presented a couple of different options to TechDOT, and they haven't agreed up on it. And based on what we have seen, it's like, it's not going to be a simple fix. It will get, going to be a, a small project because we have to work on the parking area to, right now, there's no direct access from east to west in the parking area be, because we didn't want the cars to go out and exit the same exit that truck, fire trucks use. So for that, we need to modify the design and present it to TechDOT. So it is going to be, first, we thought it's, it's going to be a minor, small project, but now it is like a little bit bigger based on what Tech, what TechDOT has given to us as recommendations. So we're starting to visit with TechDOT, and if it needs to be a project, it will be a small project there.
Now, Eric just asked for forgiveness later. Doesn't seem like a major project, a week and weekend deal.
TechDOT's, TechDOT's pretty good at catching you doing work that's not permitted or allowed and stopping that. So we're, we're going to work through the process. Thank you.
Mayor Proton, you got a question?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yelsey, I just want to tell you thank you on the lights on thirty-five. As Trent well knows, I've, I've been with him on several conversations about, about that light project, and I've got several citizens that inquire about it on a regular basis.
I think the Cozes have passed that through the generations to me. We're, we're going to get it done.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All good. Any other questions, comments? Yeah, I was gonna, I think it's slide fifty-nine, talking about the sidewalk. I was just going to ask, as it's... There it is. Just with the bond program, just, you know, Eric, what your, I mean, obviously, we, we chunk of money, instead of doing this a little bit at a time, you know, here, here we are, you know, upfront. What, what do you think this will mean in, say, five years to our, our sidewalks and where we were headed?
In five years, Mayor, I believe that we'll have reduced our work order load and, and regular submission of work orders by about fifty percent once we invest this bond amount back into our program. I believe that we'll see a reduction to that amount coming in.
That'd be one that, at that point, hopefully, it'd be something that we can control a little bit easier on an, on an annual basis as opposed to we're continuing to play catch-up.
Yes, sir.
That, that was the, that was the reason behind it was just fast-track us and help us get caught up sooner into a position where we can really truly maintain the system on an annual basis. But we got to get to a, a point and then know what that's going to be. So I appreciate that. And it looks like, I think it's the slide right in front of it, it has the sidewalk. Yep, that's it. Looks like over here, a couple of subdivisions, we're doing quite a bit of sidewalk work in it. Looks like Westwood Village over here off of Bailey, and looks like Dixie Woods. Both have some significant repair work going on there. Is, is that what that tells me there? And I'm assuming this was taken recently?
Yes, sir. This is the current image. Just to provide a little bit of context, so in the bottom right-hand corner, Zone E, when we awarded the contract with our current vendor this year, we started in Zone E. So as soon as contract was awarded this year, we started in E and then worked our way back to A, B, expensed all of our contract dollars. And as soon as we renew with city council, our vendor will start again in Zone C, that upper right-hand corner. So you could see the progression. I'll also offer that you can see the amount of new work order requests that are in there. So just, just imagine that when the team was completed about two and a half months ago in Zone A, which is west of two eighty-eight, there wasn't a data point present. And now in those last couple of months, you can see how many work orders have been submitted after we went through and zeroed out the dashboard. So that, that shows you the amount of work that comes in on a reactionary basis and is public-generated, which is why we need to really get out there and start to find the work ourselves and create a true program-based approach.
If I can, if I can say something as well. So Mr. Hammond and I have a meeting with the consultant that did the multimodal and the sidewalk connectivity plan back in twenty-twenty. So we're really going to take a holistic approach to being able to maximize those funds. Part of that connectivity is connecting the, the destin, or interest destination spots. So we're really looking at it from not just sidewalk by sidewalk, but we're looking at it from a city-based approach. And so we can maximize those funds and also maintain burn rate so we can, we can make that expenditure in the time that we allotted for it.
That's good. And I, so I could imagine in, you know, four or five years, instead of seven hundred and ninety-one open, you know, work orders, we may, like I said, cut in half, you know, in the three, three fifty, three seventy-five range, which would then be something, again, on a, on a, an annual basis, we're actually keeping up with the system, barring any, you know, thing weird that happens out there that, like a drought, it causes problems in an underlying base. And I, I'll say this just for the public and others, when we had the drought, not last year, one, twenty-eleven, I told a lot of people, we haven't seen the effects of that drought yet. It'll be a decade or more before we truly see the decades. And I think a lot of the, especially a lot of the asphalt streets that have seen the sloughing off and all of those, it's that subgrade, it's that subbase that's eroding. And it's the, it's the, it started in twenty-eleven, last year didn't help it all. And so it's just part of that groundwork and, and infrastructure work that you can't see. But it's vital to the, to the asset itself. So appreciate the, appreciate the efforts and all of this, appreciate the presentation. Last call for questions and comments from council. Turn it, turn it back to Trent.
No, I just appreciate council's time for this early meeting this afternoon so we could work, you know, present all the information today. And then I think when we get to do these things, you get to see how talented our staff is and, and all the different folks that, that do the, do the hard work to, to make sure we are good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars and, and are working hard every day to make sure we do have sustainable infrastructure. So I thank, thank our team for putting all this together and presenting this, this evening as well. So thank you, Mayor.
Good deal. All right. Any last follow-up? Seeing none, we'll adjourn, excuse me, we'll adjourn the CIP update at five thirty-six.
According to the National Fire Protection Association, cooking fires is the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries in the United States. Forty-four percent of reported home fires started in the kitchen, and sixty-six percent of those cooking fires started with the ignition of cooking materials. Cooking fires can be prevented by never leaving items on the stove unattended, by using a timer to help remind yourself that you are cooking if you must walk away from the kitchen, and avoid distractions like the TV, small children, even social media. The Pearland Fire Department reminds you to serve up fire safety in the kitchen each time you cook a meal. Think of it as part of your meal prep to ensure you don't have a cooking fire. And if you do, you'll be better prepared to handle the situation. Always keep an oven mitt and pan lid and a Class K fire extinguisher nearby. Use the lid to smother the flames, turn off the burner, and leave the pan covered until it's completely cooled. For more information, visit pearlandtx.gov/fire.
Pearland and Athletics. Pearland, Texas is known for a lot of things. And one of the most exciting is our rich tradition of championship athletics. Over the last decade, Pearland Little Leaguers have become pretty famous. That's because our teams have won a lot of championships. And we've been featured in the Little League World Series a bunch. That's quite a feat we are very proud of. Texas is known for high school football, and some of the very best is found right here in Pearland. We played in three state championship games in the last decade alone, and we believe more will come. But we don't just play championship baseball and football. Team sports, individual sports, recreational sports, Pearland has it all, even powerlifting. It's all right here. So suit up or find a seat, because there's nothing like Pearland and championship athletics. Pearland, prepare to love it.
Hello, virtual campers. Mary Kate here with your Camp at Home series. This week is holidays. So as we enter July, what holiday crap do you think we're going to be doing today? That's right, Christmas! Today, we're going to be learning how to build a permanent snowman. I guarantee you, it's the coolest craft we've ever done. All you will need is foam shaving cream, a box of baking soda, a bowl, and a mixing tool. So let's get to building. So we're going to start out by pouring about two cups, which is just this one box, into our mixing bowl and slowly adding our shaving cream. You don't put all the shaving cream in at once, because you've got to get it mixed up as well. And the more mixed it gets, it'll start to take on that consistency of snow, which everybody that grew up in Pearland should know what snow looks like, right? Because we have it all the time. And the good news about this is there's nothing toxic in the mixture. So as we start to mix it in, you will be able to use your hands to really get it going. But we want to get that shaving cream mixed in so it doesn't stick to our hands and not into the actual mixture of the baking soda. All right, we're going to put a little bit more in and mix it up. And the more shaving cream you use, the heavier the snow will get. You don't want it really, really heavy, but you definitely don't want it to be too light because we've got to get the snowballs to have a compact density, which means that we need it to be a little bit heavier of a mixture. All right? All right, so we have put a little bit of the shaving cream in. We haven't put the full amount. You'll just have to play with it and see what the actual full amount will be. But as you can see how light it is... also, you can start to touch it and feel how cool it is. It's not nearly as cold as snow. And if you've never been around snow, you'll just have to take my word for it. So, we're going to add a little bit more shaving cream in to give it that heavier consistency. And I think we'll be ready for that. All right. So, I have made the first layer of the snowman body. And as I was getting ready for that second layer, I realized I need to go ahead and give you a hint. When you're forming your snowballs, make sure that you do not rub it as though it was clay. So, because when you start to do that, it'll just dissolve right in your hand. So, make sure you continue to compact as you form that snowball. All right, guys. So, I would love to see your snowmen, whether they're the tall and slender kind, like Mr. Sunshine here, or one big blob of a snowman. I would love to see the pictures. So, you could either post them on the comments below or you can tag Pearland Parks and Recreation with your pictures of your snowmen. Thank you, guys, and stay cool.
I had stayed late to tend to the fishes, and I heard a knock at the door. I sized him up as I walked over, because you never know what or who might turn up after hours in the big rotten pear.
Are you Educady?
Is a fish wet?
I was at my wit's end. I knew moving to Texas would have its challenges, but never anything like this. Educady was my last stop before giving up.
He said his neighbors were yelling at night, arguing about who cooks for who, and that there was a strange residue on their shared fence. He also mentioned that he kept finding small balls of hair and uneaten bits of food throughout his backyard. From the photos he provided, I could tell that this case was going to take me to the wrong side of the tracks. I sent him on his way and made plans to walk the scene in the morning with my partner, Outdoor August, and with fresh eyes. After a night of combing through evidence, there wasn't enough apple juice to clear away my grogginess. I started to look through the evidence so I could head out as soon as my partner arrived. But it turns out, this was a case I had to fly solo on. Julio lived near a drainage ditch, which backed up to a wooded area. The water and tall trees were a rarity in this urban sprawl, but the soft mud at the bottom of the ditch showed small footprints and tracks leading toward his home. The backyard was well-kept, short-trimmed grass and a variety of bushes along the fence line and large oak trees. The patio was neat with two small empty dishes and what appeared to be pieces of kibble. The grass covered any traces of tracks. But a quick peek around with a sharp eye, I was able to see that there was sign everywhere. I was on the right track.
I watched from the house as Educady collected more evidence. Had she found a shoe print? When she left, I was more nervous than before. Was I being followed or pursued in my own backyard?
Back in my office with a fresh apple juice, I poured through the evidence to find the missing piece. There was more to this case. Exhibit A: Small footprints. Exhibit B: Hair balls that, when crushed, revealed small bones. Exhibit C: Photos of the food bowl and the leftover kibble. Exhibit D: White residue on the fence and the tree limbs. Exhibit E: Neighbors asking, "Who cooks for you?" Late at night. Exhibit F: Scat.
Oh, who cooks for who? Who cooks for who? Who cooks for who?
And that's when it hit me. That's it! This was a case of the annoying neighbor, all right. Just not the humankind.
Please come take a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in today, Julio.
Thank you, thank you.
And I'm very sorry about your cat, Whiskers.
Oh, how did you know about my sweet Whiskers?
Please, let me explain.
I was shocked, to say the least. Turns out, my neighbors weren't to blame. Oh, I was. My cat, Whiskers, had died shortly before my move to Texas. And I took pity on the stray cats of my neighborhood. But as it turns out, was feeding more than just my neighborhood strays and my backyard had become a smorgasbord of buffets for possums and raccoons and rats. Oh, Educady had an answer for all my problems, except for one. But I just don't understand. Why do my neighbors keep saying, "Who cooks for who?"
Now, that was the piece of evidence that blew this case wide open. So, in your backyard, you were attracting more than just mammals. You also were attracting a barred owl. This owl was attracted to those mammals because it was its food source. So, if you look here, we've got the residue on the fence, which was from the barred owl. And by the looks of the amount of residue and the pellets left behind, they were eating pretty well.
Oh, Educady, I had no idea that there could be so many distinct animals living within the city, let alone my own backyard. Educady gave me a task list to solve my situation with my furry and feathered neighbors. I must learn how to cohabitate if I want to get a decent sleep anytime soon. Step one: Remove the food source. Stray and outdoor cats kill billions of animals each year. They spread disease and parasites to wild populations of animals and threaten vulnerable populations of animals. I had no idea feeding wild animals is unlawful in Pearland. I also didn't know that feeding wild animals changes their behavior and makes them more reliant on humans' false survival. It destroys the instinct to fear humans, which could lead to potentially dangerous encounters between animals and humans in the future. Step two: Keep my trash cans latched tight. Animals like raccoons are very smart and have extremely sensitive hands to help them open even the most difficult of lids. Step three: Visit the nature center and learn some more about Texas animals and their tracks. Knowing more about what lives in my area might help me be a little less afraid of what goes bump in the night. Step four: Always watch from a distance. It is never safe to approach or touch a wild animal. Always leave that to the trained professionals. Step five: Visit the Pearland Animal Shelter. They have many animals that need homes. Or I could even become a foster parent.
Flying solo on this case wasn't easy, but no mystery ever is. Hopefully, he'll keep to the straight and narrow. But if not, I'll be around. Because you never know what might turn up in the big pear.
Coming up on Texas Parks and Wildlife.
This is the track left in the sand by the nesting female. This is what we're looking for when we're patrolling.
So, we're trying to restore this property back to a native prairie state. This should be a tall grass prairie that's going to have a diverse plant community.
I love doing research underwater because it's such a complex and fascinating environment.
Texas Parks and Wildlife, a television series for all outdoors.
I love working and living around the ocean. The sound of the surf and looking out into the ocean, I can't imagine being anywhere else. I am Dr. Donna Shaver, and I lead the Kemps Ridley Sea Turtle Recovery Project here at Padrao National Seashore. Kemps Ridley is an endangered species that was almost obliterated within just a blink of an eye. And it became endangered because of human activities. And it's going to take human activities to help conserve that animal and to keep it on this planet for the future. There's still a long way to go to recover the population of the Kemps Ridley sea turtle. There was a film that was made in 1947 that showed an estimated 40,000 Kemps ridleys nesting at Rancho Nuevo on just one day. By the time that biologists went to the nesting beach to try to investigate, the number of Kemps ridleys nesting had already plummeted due to the loss of eggs, due to intentional taking of the eggs from the nesting beach, as well as loss of the juveniles and adults due to fisheries operations. The Kemps Ridley population continued to decline to a low of only 702 nests worldwide for 1985. A project was started as a safeguard against extinction so that if a political or environmental catastrophe occurred at Rancho Nuevo, there'd be a safe area in the U.S. where Kemps ridleys could nest and be protected. From 1978 to 1988, 22,507 Kemps Ridley sea turtle eggs were brought to Padrao National Seashore for incubation in an attempt to establish a secondary nesting colony, because Kemps Ridley is a native nester to South Texas. What we tried to do was to imprint the turtles to Padrao National Seashore. The hatchlings were released on the beach, allowed to crawl into the surf where they were recaptured using aquarium dip nets. Then, the hatchlings were sent to the National Marine Fisheries Service Laboratory in Galveston, Texas, where they were raised for approximately nine to 11 months. And that allowed the turtles to grow to a size large enough so that they could be tagged for future recognition and also to be able to avoid most predators when they were released.
And that's a big turtle. It's about three feet long.
And it took a full 10 years before we found our first confirmed returnee from that project. And it was an extremely happy day.
Look at her.
We knew that these turtles were from the project because they had on them living tags. A living tag is like a skin graft where there was a piece of the bottom shell taken out, a piece of the top shell. And that small plug from the bottom shell was glued into the surrounding shell surface on the top, providing a permanent light identification marker on the darker background of the top shell.
Okay, there's the egg cavity of the eggs.
She said there's about 100.
This is very significant for us in that we've got the first documented evidence of a sea turtle of any species that's been experimentally imprinted to a particular area to return to that area to nest.
Oh, I love this job. We're looking for sea turtle tracks primarily. We're looking for those nesting turtles. We go for their eggs and we bring them into the hatching facility. We got six nests my first year. And now, to get a day when we get 19 in one day is just... It's so exciting. I can't tell you how much it means. It's nice to know that we'll be able to pass through this life and leave the earth a little bit better place than it was when we got here.
This is the track left in the sand by the nesting female. This is what we're looking for when we're patrolling. As you can see, it's about a foot and a half to two feet wide. And there's scuff marks from the flippers and little divots in the sand that are made from the nails on the flippers as the turtle crawls up the beach or back down into the water. Nesting Kemps Ridley sea turtles are only on the beach for about 45 minutes. She lays the eggs. They come out in one or two or three at a time. They provide no maternal care for their eggs and don't return to the nest site. When the turtle is done, she will cover that nest cavity and she returns to the sea. It's very important that you watch carefully for nesting Kemps Ridley turtles. They are very slow and they can't move to avoid an approaching vehicle. This is a species that's been around for four million years. I feel like we've got an obligation to try to bring this species back so that it can be enjoyed by future generations. We work so hard to find Kemps Ridley nests on the Texas coast. Sometimes, despite hours of digging and of probing, we're unable to find the nest and protect those eggs. So, when possible, we call in the expert sniffer, my care interior Ridley, who we've trained to aid with nest detection.
Find the nest, Ridley.
When we bring Ridley to his site, he aggressively sniffs on the beach, trying to find where that nest is located. And he really enjoys doing this.
Find that nest, Ridley. Where's that nest?
And the little dog, we could have spent five hours probing and digging, bring him in, and within a matter of just minutes, he locates the nest.
Where's the nest?
Oh, good boy, Ridley. You found it. You found it. Oh, good boy. The eggs are collected from all of the nests that we find on the Texas coast and brought in for protected incubation. The incubation temperature determines whether the turtles will be male or female. Warmer temperatures produce females, cooler temperatures males. We try to hatch mostly females so that they'll have a better chance of reproduction in the wild. During the day of the release, the turtles are immediately brought down to the beach and they're placed on the beach and allowed to enter the surf and go free. These animals are pretty primitive animals and basically are working on instinct right now. Smelling the salt air, hearing the waves probably, and just making a mad dash towards the water to try to get in there as quickly as they can. They're free and they're going to be on this journey that's going to last their whole lifetime. After many years of hard work by many people, both in Mexico and the United States, the Kemps Ridley population is increasing. For the future, we're going to have to continue our very hard work. This is an endangered species success story in the making.
This is one of the last great habitats along the Texas coast.
It was a ranch of many seasons. It will be preserved forever now.
I never get tired of coming here.
I never get tired of coming here.
You don't see a lot of native coastal prairie anymore.
Yeah, the Powderhorn, you know, the name is just so evocative. And the place lives up to it, you know? From the sprawling live oaks to the miles of frontage along Matagorda Bay and the bountiful fish and game and water birds and waterfowl and redfish and trout. It's just absolutely magical. It's a sportsman's paradise and something that every outdoors enthusiast can enjoy. You know, people care passionately about their coast and they want to see it conserved. But they also want to have access to it. And so as we think about conserving what makes our coastal heritage and lands and waters so special, but also being able to provide managed access for fishing and hunting and canoeing and kayaking and bird watching and hiking and nature viewing is just an extraordinary opportunity. And the Powderhorn offers that like no other. The Powderhorn Ranch has been the dream of the conservation community for almost a quarter of a century. And everybody has recognized its scale, its incredible ecological integrity and biological uniqueness. And really fish and wildlife biologists have thought of it as one of the last great places along the coast. And this adds to a big network and complex of lands that are already protected for conservation as part of the Aransas National Wildlife Refuge and Matagorda Island. And it's kind of the hole in the doughnut. What a rich history that the Powderhorn provides in our state, really from the time of Native Americans that were hunting and fishing and living on the banks of Matagorda Bay, all the way up to the earliest European settlers that came ashore in and around this area, to the German settlers that came by there and landed, the historic ports that were established near there, and of course, the ranching heritage in the area, and the Denman family that ranching Powderhorn for almost a century.
My husband's family, his grandfather, Judge Denman, sat on the Supreme Court of Texas. He bought the Powderhorn Ranch with his son Leroy Denman. So it came into the hands of my husband Leroy Denman Jr. to ranch for some 65 years. And it was simply a love affair to encourage and to grow and to make better what he had been asked to oversee. How grateful Leroy would be if he were alive today. He wanted very much to pass it on, leaving land for the future.
We've been ranching since the 80s. And we came to the Powderhorn about 12 years ago. What a treasure. If you love your job, it's not work. And that's the way we feel about the ranch. Great place to raise kids and a family. Well, you always worry about development of a place like this. And I know from experience, from being here, when people have come to look at it, to build plants and industry on it. And so that was my biggest worry is, you know, it'd go to development instead of staying like this. You know, it's just preserving what's here. I think that's just a win for everyone.
So we're trying to restore this property back to a native prairie state. This should be a tall grass prairie that's going to have a diverse plant community. And in turn, that plant community is going to support a diverse bird community. Powderhorn is a unique place because it hasn't been divided into smaller ranches. It's still an intact tract of native tall grass prairie. There's less than 5% of tall grass prairie left in the United States. A lot of the areas are built up in homes, industry, farmland, rangeland. And you don't see a lot of just open native grassland. Obviously, this running live oak is too thick for animals to utilize. In the absence of fire, the running live oak has grown up into these thick motts. Our intent is to use herbicide and prescribed fire to knock it back and get back to a native prairie state. So birds are going to be the main animal that's going to benefit from this restoration. A lot of imperiled birds, like grassland nesting birds, but also opelmato falcons and whooping cranes are going to benefit from this restoration. The majority of this property is going to be a wildlife management area, where we'll be able to do habitat management, have public hunts. But most of the time, it's going to be an outdoor research laboratory. The state park is going to cater more towards the daily use visitors that come out, maybe camp. There'll be access to shoreline fishing, walking trails, hiking trails, biking trails. Right now, we are designing research studies, setting up public hunt programs, and overall getting ready to where the public can come out and enjoy this property.
We couldn't have done the Powderhorn Ranch project without the Texas Parks and Wildlife Foundation. This is a very entrepreneurial, innovative, public-private partnership. Really, the precedent for the future. Certainly, a public entity couldn't do this by itself. Thanks to the extraordinary efforts of the Parks and Wildlife Foundation, who put together this public-private partnership with huge seed funding from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundations, the Nature Conservancy, and the Conservation Fund, who were able to help put the deal together, and many donations from a wide variety of donors, big and small, we were able to see this dream realized.
I thank, oh, I thank the Texas Parks and Wildlife and those private sector donors that have been so gracious to make this possible.
We have a lot of work to do ahead of us, but it's good work. It's rewarding work. And it's going to help chart the course for what undoubtedly is going to be one of the most iconic and flagship properties within the state's public land system. These are the proverbial trees that we're planting so that somebody else can enjoy their shade. And if we wouldn't take these kinds of risks, we wouldn't have any more state parks for our growing public to enjoy. Powderhorn is going to be one of those places that we look back on for generations to come. And we're going to thank goodness that we had the courage and the foresight to acquire this place.
Voracious, intense, and hungry, the domestic beetles are very effective at what they do. But don't worry, they're no threat to you unless you find yourself in a bat cave.
I definitely don't want to fall when I'm in the cave now. If I fell in here and, you know, like broke my leg or something, what would happen? And I don't know. I don't really want to find out.
The back beach is back well away from the waterline. Different kinds of critters live back here. And one of the most important ones shows us evidence of his little house right here with this mound of sand and a little hole. And we're going to dig down there and see if we can uncover this little ghost crab that lives in this little burrow. He sits down there in nice, air-conditioned comfort all day long, waiting for the next night. And there we go. Here he is. Look who lives down in the burrow, a ghost crab. One of the neatest little critters on the back beach. Neat little exoskeleton colored just like the sand. Look at those beautiful little periscope eyes pop up and down. Got neat little pockets there to put the eyes down when he goes in the burrow. They're basically a scavenger. They feed on most anything alive or dead they can run across. But they're also little predators. They know how to get clams and little fish and things in the surf. And we're ready now to turn him loose and let him go back home.
The world's oceans are the last frontier on this earth. And I love being underwater. And I've always dove ever since I was little. So every time I go, it's just a thrill each and every time. I love doing research underwater because it's such a complex and fascinating environment. The basis of my research is to take photographs of the coral and to compare that to photographs I took at the Flower Gardens, which is the coral reef right off the coast of Texas, and try to see what's similar and what's different about the two sites.
The practice or art of calling wild game is the simple activity of going out and reproducing a sound that occurs naturally in the outdoors anyway. Is it right in the middle of the night? This is incredible.
Many nocturnal animals don't see the color red very well at night. So Gerald uses this to his advantage. Then, if they stay around, he gradually removes the color.
During the nesting season, the male screech owl retrieves and brings a bug back to the mother and the fledglings on average of every 30 seconds. Do you imagine the amount of work he's got to do in a night? They live on moths and lizards and june bugs and all kinds of little things. Well, he's sticking around a long time.
There's no magic, just the good use of a few sounds and a lot of time recording them.
I looked up in this tree and there was a bear in the tree. So I go in and tell my wife. She didn't believe me, of course. She had to come out and look.
Good shot. Well, he'll go down in a minute. He's in a perfect tree because he'll just hit those branches and it'll break his fall all the way down. We're going to attempt to drop him down. That's a big bear. Okay, I need tip of his nose, right on the tip. Right down the middle center of his back. We need more tape.
We put the tracking collars on these bear because we want to determine their home ranges and compare it to other studies in the United States. I expect us to find some pretty exciting information out. And without the tracking collars, we wouldn't know as much about what was going on, especially about individual animal.
Collar's plenty loose. He's snoring. He'll wake up, he'll be really groggy and...
Whoa, look at that face.
...